Our executive session and I will ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. But which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any visitor comments? Anybody?
Yeah.
He's under the weather, so he won't be right tonight. Alright, new business, discussion and vote on special event policy and application. This came up a few weeks ago after an event was, the liquor license wasn't quite accurate. And so after going back and forth, Justine took the reins and decided to revamp the event application for people, you know, big events in town. So that they go through the proper channels, whether it be the building inspector, the police department, Board of Health, whatever needs to be kind of checked and everyone's going to be able to sign off on it. So that when it comes to the board, we know that, you know, the police have been notified, the Board of Health has been notified if necessary, the building department's been notified, et cetera, et cetera, for all the different departments. So, fire department, for example. You know, everyone has a section, you know, where they'll be kind of responsible for. Which I think is really good, so that everyone's on board with the event that's happening.
For like every event? Like, so we're gonna be doing Christmas on the common?
Yes. So this is another way to keep it, you know, equitable and fair for everyone. We treat every special event the same way. And in the application, it kind of talks about the different events, whether it be a farmer's market, or a food truck festival, or whatever, depending on what's up. But we all sat down, police, fire, health, building inspector. And then I got some input from other towns who didn't have online permitting. And you kind of saw that they did. We all sat down and worked on this and it's been approved by every town government.
Don't be overwhelmed by it either. It's not, you know, it's just, it's just-
I just wanted to make sure I might be prepared.
Yep, like trail, and the trick-or-treating too as well, like they'll have to-
Alright, let's have more.
You know, yep. And so, you know, she emailed us earlier, so we'll get back to her with that, you know, once it's been approved. Do you have any other additional questions, Bill? Have you had a chance to review it?
I have had a chance to review it.
Yep. Yeah.
I have no real issues. And is there a set limit? Like, is there a cap? As far as, is it 5,000, 10,000?
Capacity?
Yeah.
Oh. Um, no, it's, there's no set limit. But there is information in here that if it's over 250 people, that the town requires a detail. That's a town by law.
And then the police will say, hey, if we were 1,000 people, we have X amount of officers.
They decide, like, they would check that, exactly. Yep, yep. I need to take a motion out of-
Make a motion to approve the special event checklist and application packet?
A second, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that there's not anyone else here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Discussion and vote on healthcare task force.
Is it discussion or vote? There's no vote, right? Discussion and vote, okay.
Cause yeah, I mean, if we're gonna put together a task force, then-
Oh, a task force.
We would vote on that, yes.
So, I'm only giving you an update, I guess the task force would be you.
Yeah, so we can-
So, do you want me to start or you?
I want, I want to hear you.
Okay. So, just give you an update of where the healthcare project is at. Because this is the first time I've really presented before, you guys versus the Board of Health and others. I'm in all these meetings and where, et cetera. I would like, as you've seen what I've laid out to you and I sent to you, I put you, gave you four pillars, there's actually five. The fifth pillar are the grants, and I did not add that yet, so there are five pillars. And the way I would like to present this to you every month is updates on these specific five pillars. The five pillars are Mary Lane demolition, which is what is going on and where with the demolition project. The second one is the trust status, which we are involved in. The third being, what is the model that we would like to have happen here in Hardwick and the community? By the way, that includes New Braintree and Oakham. And the fourth, which is not listed here, is all of the trusts, I'm sorry, the grants and various monies that we can get for this. And the last, which I said is pillar four here, but it's really an important pillar five, location identification, which is not for the faint of heart around here. So, let me give you just a really quick update, cause I only want to, like, only bore you for 10 minutes here. The Mary Lane demolition's a really big deal. When it was decided that Mary Lane was being brought down, it's really interesting that Hardwick was not really brought into these discussions. So, I'm not gonna bore for Justine with the details on how healthcare is going into private equity, they're shutting down their least profitable locations, and all this stuff happens. Bay State not only shut down Mary Lane, they shut down and sold all five health plans that they were managing to a private equity group. So, this is not just about, we don't have a building anymore, we're gonna have a lot of people in town that are actually not going to be, have their healthcare accessible in the same way. I send you guys texts every month and a while on what's happening in healthcare, what's happening with Stewart, what's happening. It's a really serious situation out here. With Mary Lane, there is a demolition delay, there was a meeting tonight, which I would have been at tonight, which isn't where, talking about trying to keep that demolition from happening. Guys, this is, here's the big problem. Ware already handed that over to MassDeb. So, you have Ma, you have Ware people trying to fight what basically the town already agreed to. And the reason the town agreed to it is because they thought it was too expensive to maintain those buildings, too much asbestos, too much stuff. So when Bay State pulled out, you got this big infrastructure and they're like, we can't take this on. So they turned it over to MassDeb. And, you know, I get it, it's a big fight, totally understand, you know, Steve Granland, I understand everything and their heart and what's going on here. But the fact of the matter is, that's a lot of buildings. And if you can imagine Hardwick, and we have this gigantic thing, and all of a sudden that big company pulled out and now we have all these big buildings, we probably also would have done the same.
Right, right.
So, that's what happened. So Ware handed over the MassDeb because of liability versus investing and fixing it up. Now, there's a lot of tours, which you saw one, there's been a lot. But here's the problem, there's been a demolition delay because there's been all these things, they gave you the list there, I'm not gonna bore you with that entire list, to try to cease and desist and stop, you know, breaking this building down, et cetera. But that's actually just ultimately delaying the inevitable. And what's happened is, these companies come in and they say, oh, that's interesting, but you can't do a thing until all this stuff is resolved. So they say really happy things, but in the end of the day, they can't do a thing. Because it's product and litigation. So that's where pillar one is. Fun, fun. I gave Justine the very first Steve Granland gigantic packet, I gave it to her as PDF, so she didn't have to read through the 40-page thing, and there's a spreadsheet coming out now. The next is the trust, which is where we really need to pay attention. Okay, this is where Hardwick does need to pay attention. The trust is, there's $17 million across several trusts. One is the Gilbert Trust, there's the Page Trust, there's multiple trusts. I know you're paying attention right now. So, right now, Bay State is the beneficiary of all of these trusts, and Bank of America's the trustee of all of these trusts. And the goal is to remove Bay State as that beneficiary, because they're no longer providing healthcare. However, they're pushing back and saying, listen, we're providing WING, which is giving healthcare to Ware within 25 miles.
But not us or anyone else?
Not us, good point. So, this is a big fight point for us. So Ware's hired an outside lawyer, as well as they're using KP, like we use KP. They're using KP primarily for the first pillar one, this is why I named pillar one, two, three. They're really putting KP on the demolition project, and they're putting the firm with Patricia Davidson on the trust piece of it. Now, what's been uncovered through this trust is, these, you know, Bank of America and Bay State are open to discussions, unless, I'm in healthcare, let me trust, these guys are gonna fight this every step of the way. But the fact of the matter is, it is not being the original intent of Gilbertville and Ware. It is not. So Patricia Davidson and that firm, and you and I talked about that, could be the key to helping us get through this little logjam right here. We are going to present a plan to Patricia Davidson on what Hardwick needs here, and that's gonna be help pillar number three, I'll talk about that in a second. The big unknown I put on this has actually been exposed. Mary Lane property is tied to the trust, so this is gonna be a little tricky. So, more on that next one at my next update. Pillar three is the Hardwick healthcare model. This has been a lot of fun working, fun, depending on if you really like doing these types of things. But we're working with the Board of Health Physician Advisory, I've worked with UMass, working with Berry, working with UMass Innovation. We're trying to put a model here in Hardwick and our communities, including New Braintree and Berry, that actually meets the needs of a rural community. It includes things like dismal urgent care, satellite pharmacy, which CBS has already been willing to do, and said they'll put out here for us, vans, mobile units, working with Eric Walheim, additional training of residents, and placing AEDs in strategic locations throughout the town to ensure that we have support. Additional trainings of residents, and even training, he's training folks like in the high school, and we're looking at the grocery stores and things like that. So we can actually support ourselves here with training and things that we need to do, outside of, you know, kind of your, you know, more, rather than available type stuff like, uh, what are we, addiction, stuff like that. So this is very specific stuff. Number, there's 14 specific grants identified to support all of these above activities, but we actually just submitted to the HRSA, which is going to add Hardwick, hopefully, and our surrounding communities as a desert now. So that would happen in 2025 to add to the scope. Anybody that's in this, in general, over the last five years, has gotten $10 million to their town to support these. And it has been towns that we recognize, it's Uxbridge and these other towns. And so totally doable, we just have to get this and submit it. The reason we've never done it before is because we were tied to Ware, we had Mary Lane, we don't have anymore, so this is our opportunity. I'm sure that I'm gonna be working with you, Justine, on making this happen.
Judy, I have a question. What is HRSA?
Yeah, the HRSA, here, I'll actually-
And then we could talk about, we can just maybe on, I'll separate.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the, I'm already past my time here. Specific grants, there's 14 grants, this is a big one though, we need to do this. Location identification, I toured all these locations, I'm still stuck on those white blue, just gotta figure this out. And really, identification of building is really important as we go for these grants and bigger things. The good thing for us, and the reason that I'm pushing Ware so hard, is because we are the desert, they are not. So whatever money we get, if we get that trust, and let's say it's even a million dollars of trust, it means I could get 5 million because we're a desert, I can multiply that. So it's really, really important that we continue to fight for that trust money and get a piece of that. But as long as they keep fighting for this demolition and all this stuff, it keeps delaying that. But it's not delaying what we're doing to bring something into Hardwick, I just want to let you know that. So hopefully, every month, we can do an update, I'll be meeting with Justine, she's a great resource, so we'll keep going. So, sorry. I'm sorry I went over. But next time I-
As much as you want, this is important.
This is not just a visitor comment.
Oh, and by the way, Walgreens pharmacist was out today, so tons of people get their prescriptions. They've, Berry Pharmacy closing, yeah, Walgreens is gonna close, by the way, that is on the list for shutdown. So that's gonna legally leave CBS for our entire area. I cannot tell you guys how important this is to fight for this, so there we are.
What can we do to help?
Just keep listening, and I will tell you exactly what we need to have done, and Justine will tell you exactly what we need.
Thank you, Judy.
I had a proposal.
Right, so the task force?
So, I was gonna propose a task force made up of one member of the select board, one of the finance committee, one of the physicians, advisory board, Judy, and then maybe one other member. There's a lot to oversee here, and I feel like Judy is definitely the point person on this. I just feel like we need, like, she's on so many pillars, there's so many layers, and we really need to be watching this and looking out for Hardwick. And I feel like with, you know, all those different groups, they all need to have the same information. So that's really important, and just, just really oversee this. And the difference really between a task force and a committee is like, once this is all figured out-
The task force goes away too.
I feel like that would be a while from now, but I feel like, you know, I mentioned this to you, it's just really important that we're keeping an eye on all these different layers. And that was just my proposal.
No, I totally agree. I mean, we've met with the Board of Health, we've met with Planning Board, I think it's so important to this town that we figure this out. I think she's absolutely right, and we have to stay on top of this from all aspects, so that we're not just, you know, piecemealing this. This is, this is core to the wellness and really success of this community. I mean, if we don't have healthcare, we don't have anything. And there's a lot of really cool things we could be doing, it's just really hard if we're like piecemealing it out, so.
So you're suggest, you're-
And if the board would like it to be a seven member or-
Well, yeah, well, let's, so, select board, FinCon.
Yep. Health Physicians Advisory, which is part of the Board of Health.
So, or, okay, Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Judy, who is it?
Yeah, I got you.
Yes. And then either an ad hoc member, or if you think planning should be on it, or-
And a member of planning.
Planning, but then, so now you have four people, so it'd be easy by- Oh no, that's five, I'm sorry, I can't count them. It's five, yeah. So Planning Board, I think, would be helpful. As you navigate, you know-
Absolutely.
Yeah. I'd be okay with this. So do you wanna send an email out to all the boards asking for interested parties?
Yes.
And then we can vote on it at the next meeting to establish it?
Oh, sure. Planning, Select Board, FinCon, President-
Board of Health. Judy.
Yep, Judy.
Judy's again, like, that's again. Okay. So we'll, that will, really, if you send it out, asking for interested people to, you know, pick a member, and we can put it together and make the-
Thank you for your support.
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
Yeah. Anything else on that right now?
We're good.
Good?
Oh, once a month?
Yeah, I, the update, yeah, I think that's important. This is a pretty critical issue.
Do you wanna pick your member? I'm just kidding.
Well, let's wait till Alec gets back.
Just pick him, just kidding.
Yeah, he might pay us for that one.
I'm kidding.
An appointment for Robert, Robert, Avan?
Avan.
For the recycling.
So, this was advertised, he passed a, he had a successful query check, they're looking for him to start ASAP. If the board would like to approve his appointment, I will make sure that I get him an offer letter tomorrow.
Make a motion to approve Robert Avan to the recycling group, or the recycle?
Yep. Do you wanna just state his rate?
Oh, his, his start pay will be 15, 16 hour, and per seven hours a week.
Second up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, yeah, that's contract, this is just, this, you know, this went back and forth with legal, and we finally have it back in our hands. This is effective July 1st, we just need to sign it.
Yes.
Well, I hope, vote, vote, you know, to sign it, so.
Make a motion to-
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the Town of Barry in Hardwick, menderandum of agreement for the ambulance service for the Town of Hardwick?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to table the approval minutes, I wasn't present, you know, we have one, actually, one member that could vote.
Right, well, one of the meeting minutes, can you look into-
Yes.
Cause there's other ones to the missing.
Yep, it was July 8th, that will be on the next agenda, they are done, they were just stuck to the back of another thing and they got missed. It's just July 8th.
The town administrator report.
So, the municipal office building was rekeyed on August 22nd. I had a Zoom meeting with CMRPC about grants that we've been awarded with the Highway Superintendent. I put together a spreadsheet of all of our grants, ran it by them to make sure there wasn't anything I was missing. I went over a few different grants with capital planning, looking for some direction so we can apply, we can be strategic about the grants that we go, we go for, especially because we have to run them ourselves. I met with the Highway Superintendent, the Fire Chief on the two local earmarks being received and putting, and we're putting together a timeline, using the funds. We have to kind of use them ASAP because of the potential nine C cuts that the governor is proposing. So if we spend it, we won't lose it. So that was the earmark for this building, and for the fire hydrants, we, with the money that we got from the earmark, we were able to fix three of the hydrants.
Excellent.
We went over already that we have three vacancies in the Highway Department, they've all been advertised, we're finally getting some applicants, which is great. We have zero applicants with a wastewater treatment plant, Assistant Chief Operator. So if anyone's interested, who was watching, please apply. We had our monthly department head meeting, met with the Fire Chief, former Fire Chief, Fire Chief from Lester, member of the Select Board, and two members of the Capital Planning Committee, we looked at a used fire truck from Wales. Unfortunately, it's just not a viable option for the town, it was half the amount of water, three, only, we fit three people instead of five, and is the same year as our current only working fire engine. So I just want to give the board that the Capital Planning Committee did approve the, a demo truck purchase, from the town to move forward to the Select Board and then the FinCon for their approval. So by the, for the next meeting, I'll have more information from you and the Fire Chief present to vote. We really did our due diligence. We looked at, you know, a demo truck, a used truck, we looked at who would be to buy one custom-made, what is the best option for the town, for our, that's gonna be physically responsible, but also, we have to be responsible for our residents.
This would entail going up or that exposure, that would just distract, so just to make it clear, but it's necessary, the town desperately needs a new park.
Well- It just puts us at such a liability. Met with the assessor and building inspector on due diligence for the three vacant town properties, we're working on the zoning analysis and looking at the due restrictions for the three vacant properties, we meet actually weekly, because there's a lot of work that has to be done for that. I attended a chief procurement officer webinar through the Office of the Inspector General's Office. Tended the Capital Planning Committee, I created the town zoo account, that is no longer gonna be the town zoo account, because we already have one. Worked with fire, police, health, building, executive assistant on the special permitting process and procedural paperwork, which the board approved tonight, the application. There's a couple people that I want to recognize. I'd wanna recognize Devin Rood, who's the Director of Facilities at Eboville School, for mowing the grounds of the day of the Hardwick Fair, or the day before the Hardwick Fair. Police Officer Patrick Armstrong, Deputy Fire Chief Nicholas Gomond, and Fire Chief Willie Gomond are being honored by the West District District's Attorney Office for saving a life back in January, on September 23rd at the New Braintree Town Hall slash police station slash counseling thing. Which is really great. I also want to recognize our treasure collector, Jess Crawford, she took classes towards her Massachusetts Treasurer certification, so next August, she will be eligible to take her exam, both also to be a certified Massachusetts Treasurer. A few important dates, I'm on vacation next week, which is very important. We're having an open meeting law training on September 30th, 4:30 to 6:30 at Eboville School in the auditorium. This is for all employees and for as many, you know, elected or appointed boards and committee members that, that can attend. The Town Hall will be closed from 4:30 to 6:30, that's a late night, so all the employees can attend the training, it will be closing for those two hours. Last day for early voting is Wednesday, August 28th, from 10 to 4:30 in this room. And the state primary is Tuesday, September 3rd, and polls will be open from 7 to 8.
Okay, just some civic events, the Trail of Treats, which Lauren Mace reached out to the board to propose October 26th from 5:30 to 8, with a rain date, I believe, of the next day, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yep.
And I did respond to her about, you know, if she had spoken to the Chief of Police, and he actually responded back to me that that date was fine with the community, so just so we know there. And then also Christmas on the Common, December 1st, 3 to 5?
5:30, sorry, we changed it.
3 to 5:30, okay.
With tree lighting at 5.
Okay, perfect. And then, so now that we've enacted our special event application, both events will have to complete those applications, but again, I'm sure that's not gonna be a problem. I don't have a problem with either of these dates, and we'll make a motion to accept them.
Make a motion to approve the dates for the Christmas, Christmas on the Common and the Trail of Treats? Do you need the dates as far as-
Sure, yeah. No, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda?
Yep.
Alright, the Trail of Treats is October 26th, 2024, from 5:30 to 8 p.m. And Christmas on the Common is December 1st, 2024, 3 to 5:30.
Yes. Okay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do you have, can you give Angie one of those applications?
If I don't have one right now.
I have one printed for my meeting that you can have.
And then, can we email that to Lauren?
Absolutely.
So they'll have three jobs, please shoot it.
It will, yeah.
This will be on the website.
Just so they're aware. You guys always do.
Yeah.
It's nothing that you've probably not already done before, just to make sure that anyone that needs to know what's going, you know, just has that, you know, heads up.
Just to make sure. I made a mess with it.
Okay, it's not this one.
Anything that we need to sign?
Yep. Sorry, so I made a mess with it. There you go.
Thank you.
Paper's everywhere. Papers everywhere.
Do we have the most of this here? Just the meeting minutes needed to go to the, since we've got to be kept.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, good. And then we'll take a motion.
Nothing for the selection round here?
I got nothing.
Okay, I have nothing, that's good. Just asking. All right, so I make a motion to end the meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Second, 8:18.
Eat the tomatoes.
Thank you.
Thank you.